Vice Mayor Andre Gonzalez, you are running for reelection to Ward Two of the city of Bakersfield. Thank you so much for joining us here.
Absolutely, thank you for having me.
Yeah, so you are running for reelection. You're asking for four more years on the council. You've been in office since 2016. Vice Mayor since 2023, first Latino to be appointed to that role. Why are you asking for four more years on the council? What work do you feel remains undone by yourself?
Yeah, it has been an honor to represent Ward Two on the Bakersfield City Council. Ward Two, as you know, is the most diverse wards in the city. It's the most urban and it has some of the most disadvantaged neighborhoods in the city. And so there's a lot to do. And there are many, many issues that we face in the urban core in neighborhoods like Niles of Monterey in East Bakersfield or Southeast Bakersfield and MLK Park or Oleander and Sunset, which is where we're here right now, our historic neighborhood or West Chester. And then not to mention downtown and Old Town Kern. There are many pressing challenges that have been in the making for decades. And so we need a steady hand at the wheel. We've been making progress in terms of revitalizing downtown and Old Town and many of our neighborhoods and trying to address some of the issues that have gone neglected for far too long. But there's still more to do. You know, the wheels of government move slowly. And as much as we continue to push, my colleagues and I, City Hall to get better, we're still seeing that there are issues remain. And so I want to provide that leadership to help make change and to continue to improve Ward Two and frankly, all of Bakersfield. We have a lot of issues to discuss. We have a lot of issues that we're addressing citywide and also in neighborhoods of Ward Two. And really need that experienced leadership who can begin on day one, who can start right when the new term starts and who can get moving, who knows how to navigate City Hall, who knows how to get things done so that we can deliver the best opportunities and the best resources for the constituents of Ward Two.
And expand on that point a little bit more for us, Vice Mayor. The fact that Ward Two is the downtown ward, right? It has all the nightlife. It has, it's the most urban and diverse, like you said. So what are some of those kind of unique challenges you've had to deal with?
Well, you know, there's seven city council wards in the city of Bakersfield. And so what we see in Ward Two is that we have many residential neighborhoods, just like every other ward, but we also have this huge central business district in downtown, right? And then we have Old Town Kern as well. So you have a higher concentration of downtown businesses within the urban core. And so Ward Two is unique because it includes a lot of downtown, up to 24th Street. North of 24th Street now is in Ward, is in Ward Three. So, so we have a whole host of different challenges. We have, I have still, still the responsibility, first and foremost, to respond to the needs of my residents who live in various different neighborhoods, like the historic neighborhood of Oleander Sunset, like the neighborhood in Centennial Park, in West Park, in West Chester. I have to respond to those needs every single day and identify issues of concern and also ideas to make those neighborhoods better. But then in addition to that, we also have to respond to downtown and how do we continue to address the challenges that downtown faces? But also at the same time, work systematically towards revitalization of the downtown, which is two different things. We have to work at the revitalization of downtown because we know that every major city and every worthwhile city, American city, has a vibrant city center. And so downtown revitalization is really important to me because it means that the stronger our downtown is, the stronger our city becomes.
Tell us more about those efforts because I know the revitalization of downtown, like you said, has come through many city-funded grant programs, but also the revitalization efforts of East Chester has also been a focus for you. So can we expand on those efforts a bit more?
Yeah, first and foremost, when I got elected to the city council, I proposed a new city goal to double the population of downtown by 2030. We were right in the midst of developing a high-speed rail station area plan. You know, the high-speed rail is planning to go over at Golden State. And so we wanted to make sure that we were building a vision that we really would accommodate the growth of downtown Bakersfield. For me, it meant housing. It meant that if we have more of people living in the downtown core, that has its benefits for not only the nightlife in terms of more people who are walking around and visiting restaurants and cafes and entertainment venues, but it also provides a stronger sense of safety. We know that some of the most vibrant and safest neighborhoods are actually in metro city centers in America where it's densely populated. Why? Because it has what they call eyes and ears on the street. You know, you have people who are, who are active, who are walking to the grocery store or walking to the, to a cafe or just walking and walking their dog, right? And the more people that you have activating the spaces, the safer those neighborhoods become. And that's what we need for our downtown longer term. And so one of the things I've pushed was, it has been, how do we support more housing in our downtown? Both market rate and affordable housing. And we've, we've seen an incredible number of units, market rate units, come to fruition in downtown. We've also seen a number of affordable housing units come into Ward Two over the last seven and a half years. But in addition to that, we also have an Economic Opportunity Area Program. These are grants that we're able to offer small businesses so that they can improve their facade, so that they can have an opportunity to get up and running. And that has created an incentive for people to come downtown and open up shop downtown as opposed to other parts of the city. And as a result, we're seeing more and more restaurants open up in downtown Bakersfield. I'm in conversation with at least a half a dozen potential restaurants or other businesses that are making plans right now to come into downtown Bakersfield that we'll be announcing over the next six to nine months. So downtown revitalization, even despite some of the more immediate challenges that we're facing, continues to revitalize because people, those with the means and those who want to invest still have an appetite, still see the value in investing in the downtown core. So I have taken it upon myself as a councilman to be the number one cheerleader for downtown Bakersfield and to continue to promote it amongst our business community as a place to invest. And I think that effort, aside from my responsibility as a city council member on the dais, has really paid off dividends over time because it creates, it creates a fuller picture of what the opportunities are for our community. Take a look at the Padre Hotel. Padre Hotel continues to have banner years. They're currently revitalizing and renovating their ground floor for an event space. We're, we're, we're working with lots of different other restaurants that are set to open. We have Central Cali Brewing, for example, opening up on, on Q Street that will soon take shape. So these are investments that are being made because of and, and, and with the support of, I should say, with the support of the city of Bakersfield through these EOA programs. But that's not all. We're also working on improving the walkability and the safety through the built environment of our downtown. One of the projects that I have been pushing for years and I'm very proud of that is the Eighteenth, Nineteenth Street Improvement Project. This will create connectivity, an east-west connection between the Padre Hotel and Mill Creek with improvement, improvements of street lighting, landscaping, trees, street trees, street furniture, better sidewalks, and of course, better repaved roadways. This will allow us to really see that connectivity and that walkability and more activation of our streets over the long term. That project is already in design. The full project is already in design, which is not nothing. That, that, for those of us who may not be familiar with how these projects work, the design phase is often the longest part of a project and it's very expensive. But once we get the, the project designed out, then we can begin construction. And we're going to see construction within the next year of the first phase between L and N on both Eighteenth and Nineteenth Streets. On Nineteenth Street, for example, it's one of the hardest blocks because it's one of the last blocks in downtown that has been revitalized. And we have some, some really hard issues on that block, on those blocks that have, you know, been around for decades. But the fact that we're able to actually invest in the infrastructure is going to be a huge improvement. And my hope is that coupled with a lot of the private investment, that'll help us really make those enhancements that are necessary to, to, to bring back that activation. And we're seeing some of it. You know, we see Radio Sandwich that has moved in there on that particular block. We've seen some other antique shops that have opened up. Others are looking at that block. So if, if the city can come in and make those improvements to the public right away, coupled with the private investment, we will see that block renew. But that is what downtown revitalization really is about. It's block by block by block. It's by staying focused. It's by working, you know, incrementally at all of these different issues and trying to get all of these things rowing in the same direction. There's lots of large initiatives that we're trying to pursue, like parking, parking studies and looking at potentially, how do we add capacity for parking? But then also some smaller things like dumpster enclosures and how do we provide assistance for our businesses to better secure their dumpsters? Because we know that is, and that has been a problem over time. And so, you know, I could spend hours talking about all the different components of downtown revitalization and what we're trying to do to, to make those things happen. But ultimately, you know, the proof is in the pudding. And on Saturday nights, on Friday nights, we're seeing hundreds, if not thousands, of people coming downtown, enjoying downtown Bakersfield. And we're seeing an improvement. And, and we're seeing restaurants and businesses succeed as a result of more and more people coming downtown. And that will have a cumulative effect of improving our downtown collectively over the longer term.
I think in addition to those success stories though, Vice Mayor, one undeniable problem that is most visible in your ward is homelessness. A lot of that population is centralized kind of here in downtown. So I want to touch on homelessness, but before that also, you talked a lot about these local businesses and the local economy. Again, many success stories that you shared with us, but I think the reality is a lot of businesses, not just in your ward, but county-wide, city-wide, a lot of businesses are closing down, often as a result of back-to-back break-ins or some other sort of kind of crime that, that they experience. I know the city has recently started offering the Business Security Improvements Grant. But in addition to that, can you tell us a little bit more about how you and the city are hoping to tackle these issues of crime that a lot of small local businesses continue to face, especially here in the downtown area?
Yeah, no, my heart breaks for the small businesses and I talk with them and work with them all of the time. And, and hearing those stories certainly works against our efforts. And for me, it's a gut punch. It's a punch in the gut because there's so many of us who are volunteering our time. You know, city council is a volunteer position and who are working so hard to see a revitalization when, when there's a window break or when there's an arson or when, when, you know, there's some sort of theft or burglary. It is a gut punch to me personally. I, I feel it because it works against what we're trying to accomplish. But, but more and more businesses are opening up in downtown, not fewer. We're, we're seeing activation of buildings that were, and have been boarded up and vacant for years. So we're seeing more investment, not less investment. So even despite some of the challenges, we're seeing, we're seeing still a continued revitalization of the urban core. And that has been my focus, is to making sure that we support our small businesses. We support those property owners who are trying to do the right thing. So one of the things you pointed out, I actually initiated. That Small Business Security Grant Program was an initiative that I, I led and that I had proposed. We have spent nearly a million dollars now to provide grants for businesses to harden their sites, meaning erect wrought iron fences or add security cameras, which is so critical. We need every single business and property owner to have security cameras in their, on their property. But those grants have been monumental in helping us not only secure those businesses, but also when incidents occur, we're able to find the suspect far more quickly. For example, the Two Cam Building, when the Two Cam Building caught fire, we were able to find the suspect within days, within just a few days. That's monumental, whereas in the past, years past, many arson suspects went without notice. We have security cameras in many businesses now as a result of this security grant program. So, you know, when people say homelessness is concentrated in downtown, yes, it is. But historically, it has been that way. There's nothing that I have proposed, there's nothing that the city is doing that concentrates people particularly into downtown. We know that many of the social services are downtown and in the city's urban center, which, you know, allows people to come downtown and concentrates people downtown. But, but even still, even still, we're working on trying to address the situation. We're trying, we've, we've made a significant number of investments in order to help people move off of the streets. I'm sure those are going to be your next questions. And, you know, I think that has been one of the things that has been the, the biggest struggle for me and frustration points for me frankly, over the last seven and a half years in that despite all of our best efforts and all of the investments we've made and all of the successes we're seeing of moving people off the streets, there's still a constant flow of people falling into homelessness in our community who once weren't homeless, who are falling into homelessness. And why? Why are they becoming homeless? Well, number one, the fentanyl crisis and the drug crisis that we're experiencing locally. Number two is mental health and treatment and the resources available for people who were untreated. We also see the effects of AB 109 and Prop 47 and Prop 57, where people once were incarcerated who are now are not. And when they were incarcerated, by the way, they're receiving treatment for mental health and now they're on our streets. We need to make sure that we have systems in place. And that's why I have been a huge advocate for SB 43 and for Care Court, which Care Court, by the way, is coming online next month. And I've been pushing the city to get us moving so that we can petition for certain individuals that we know already who have been exhibiting problematic behaviors in downtown and other places that we can get them into the Care Court system as quickly as possible once it launches, once the county launches that program.
So you're all for kind of those mandated services for, for a lot of the people who potentially refuse service?
Absolutely. At some point, what we, what we want to do first and foremost is offer services, right? The best success is when we're able to offer services and people are willing to go. And we've seen that. The Brundisley Navigation Center, which by the way, is probably one of my most proudest achievements in pushing that forward. That was a concept that I had proposed at the city council. I helped identify the site. Alan Tandy and I were going around finding different potential locations. And the Calcoth facility was the site that I, I wanted because I knew that it had the capacity to meet the growing demand. And I knew, but even back then in 2017, 2018, looking at the state trends and looking at what was happening in other cities, that the homelessness crisis would only grow. And so we knew that we had to build the capacity in order to meet the need. We also had to work on prevention efforts, by the way, in order to prevent people from falling into homelessness in the first place. That's easier said than done, but still, we identified that as an issue early, early on. The Brundisley Navigation Center, we built 150 beds in the first phase, 150 beds. People said that nobody would go to that shelter. Within weeks, that shelter was full. It was full. Every single per, every single bed was filled with, with an individual. It was the first shelter, along with M Street, that offered services for single adult women. Now think of that. Before 2019, before 2020, we had no shelter for single women who were experiencing homelessness. I mean, that was, that was a shame. Now we have the capacity to do that at Brundisley. Since that time, since we opened in October of 2020, we've been able to build capacity in two iterations. Again, with my pushing, and it has always been a fight, right? At, at City Hall, with my pushing to today, where we now have 289 beds at the shelter. We have a recuperative dorm for those people who are being discharged from the hospital and still need treatment, still need care, who are not yet ready to, to, to be on their own and who once were discharged on the street, who are now in a shelter and they're in a hospital-like setting where they can recoup. That, that's a huge plus for our community and for, for respecting people and treating them with, with the humanity that they deserve. And so we have 289 beds now that are completely full. They're all full. From the shelter though, and, and we have a wonderful operator in Mercy House, which is again, an organization that I personally recruited and, and petitioned them to actually come into Bakersfield so that they can service our, service our community because I had heard from lots of service providers and people throughout the country that they were the best in the business and I knew that we needed the best. Their whole philosophy is to ask a single question to every single person in the shelter. And that is, what is your housing plan? What is your housing plan? The shelter is never the ultimate destination, the ultimate stop, the last stop. There's always a next step. Our goal at Brundisley is to move people into permanent housing. It's to help them with job training programs so that they can get to a place where they can become self-sufficient. Or if they're permanently disabled, so they can get social security so that they can sustain themselves over time outside of the shelter. Or that they can find permanent supportive housing, again, that is subsidized, but so that they can move out of the shelter. All of those components, all of those different strategies are, are at play at Brundisley Navigation Center. So since that time that we opened up, we've been able to permanently house almost 400 people from that shelter into permanent housing. So think about it. We got 400 people over here. We have 289 people who are in the shelter tonight, plus another 400 beds that the city has sponsored basically, or helped sponsor of emergency shelter beds over the last five years. That's over 1,100 people who would have been on the street last night had we done nothing, right? Who would have been on the street last night, who are now in shelter or in permanent housing.
And your goal-
That's a plus. That's a plus.
Your goal, I believe, was to have citywide 700 beds by the end of 2024. Is that correct?
Citywide or?
Citywide is what I, I read in a recent report.
Well, the, the goal is to have cities, 700 city-sponsored beds. And that is including some of the beds that we sponsored at the Mission at Kern, some of the beds at M Street Navigation Center, Open Door Network, and then also at Brundisley. So yeah, I mean cumulatively, there'll, there'll be 700 additional emergency shelter beds since 2019 that, that the city has sponsored or has built out.
So again, on top of the existing ones at a lot of these shelters?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So, you know, those are additional beds that were created since 2019.
And as of now, you said we have about 400 city-sponsored beds?
Actually, no, we have, we, we have those 700 beds now. Now that we have the additional beds at BLNC.
Okay. And that was the recent $600,000 expansion at the center? Okay. Cause I also read that it was, the, the total bed count at the center was now 318. I don't know if we just got that number wrong or if it's the 289 that you mentioned?
Yeah, so we're, we're talking about recuperative beds as well. And so cumulatively, it's well over 300.
Okay. And so it sounds like, Vice Mayor, a lot of your focus when it comes to tackling homelessness is involving these bed spaces and treatment spaces for the homeless. Is that correct?
Well, because we have been in a homeless crisis and what do we do when we're in a crisis? We have to, we have to act with urgency. And number two is we have to triage the situation. And so we have to move people as quickly as possible from the street into some sort of shelter. And, and there's a number of reasons why. The primary reason is because it's in the best interest of the individual experiencing homelessness. For a lot of people, they don't want to be on the street, contrary to popular belief. A lot of people do not want to be on the street. They're experiencing significant life events that have caused them to be homeless, unhoused. And it's traumatic. It's traumatic. And so we have to help people move off the streets as quickly as possible, get them into shelter and then get them the supports, whatever, whatever they need so that they can stabilize and then they can move on. It has been amazing to watch individuals transform as they enter Brundisley. I remember one example of a woman who I had visited on the street for years. Had, you know, helped, tried to help her move off the street. She would, she was very reluctant, wouldn't even, wouldn't even talk to me. Had sent Flood Ministries, with whom we contract as well, out there on several occasions. And, and she always refused services. But it was that constant contact, right? We would, I personally delivered meals to her on, on Mother's Day. Given her some flowers, just always just trying to build a relationship with her. She ended up entering Brundisley. And over time, she completely transformed. She was a different person, complete 180. And actually engaged with me in a conversation and was very talkative. They put on, they were able to give her a beautiful dress that she wore the day I visited. And, and since that time, she was able to move into a congregate living space in a home where I'm, I'm told she's still doing well. But that's the success story that keeps me going and that gives me hope that we can get out of this crisis. We know that not everyone has the same story as to how they found themselves on the streets. And because of that, there, there's not one single approach to how we have to respond to this crisis. The first response is always going to be and always should be, from my perspective, should always be, be one of support and outreach and try to find the, the system, try to find the way in which we can help people improve their lives. We have the street medicine teams that we're trying to coordinate with now. We have outreach teams. We're working in partnership with Kern County Behavioral Health to try to give people the, the, the supports that they need to move off of the streets ultimately. And we've been, we've been successful again at moving people into the shelter. We have a waiting list of people trying to get into the shelter right now.
Is there still not enough space for the number of homeless people that are in the city? Specifically in your ward?
There is not enough space. And what we need to do, but in order to respond to that, what I believe we need to do is build more housing, build more housing.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing and housing in general, not just affordable housing, but all housing. Because if you build more housing, you add more units to the inventory and by the laws of supply and demand, you're actually able to reduce the cost. And so we need more housing at all levels. Yes, affordable housing, but really at all levels.
Isn't that more preventative then? Because by building that affordable housing, right? You're trying to prevent more people from becoming homeless, but-
You're absolutely right. It's both preventative and it helps us at the end downstream, right? Because ultimately, we move people into shelter, which is an emergency shelter, right? It's not permanent. We have to move people into a permanent placement. We have to identify a permanent placement. So we need those housing units, you know, downstream. But we also need to prevent homelessness upstream. And part of that is again, housing. So building affordable housing has been a, a competing priority for me. How's, addressing homelessness and the effects of homelessness for our business community and for our residents and, you know, all, and triaging the situation. Next to also really focusing on affordable housing. So what we've done there is we built an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we've identified dollars through Measure N. Putting those dollars into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This has allowed us the opportunity to match those dollars, to receive matching grants from the state of California. So we're able to double those dollars. And every dollar that we invest, every one dollar that we invest, our housing developers, folks who are in this field are pretty savvy. They can actually match another 11 to 13 dollars for every one dollar that, every one dollar of local monies that we invest.
That's the land trust from back in October?
No, this is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So this is a fund that we have established. It's sort of a revolving fund where we provide these grants or really it's a low interest or no interest loan, long-term loan, that then gets replenished over time so that we have this trust fund available to build units. We've built over 500 units, 511 units of housing since we built this Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Again, it was because of, and funded, a, a lot of these things are because of the Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative, Measure N, that we're able to do. But 500 units of housing is, is significant. We have a project in East Bakersfield right now in my ward in Old Town Kern, the Renaissance at Baker Street. These are 88 units of low to moderate income housing and workforce development housing on Kentucky and Baker Street that will be available and up and running with- Um, that will be available and up and running within uh the next six months. Uh, this is a project that I, again, I initiated because this lot on Kentucky and Baker had laid vacant for almost twenty years. It was built, it was purchased uh during the old redevelopment days that the city um had established, a redevelopment agency for Old Town Kern. The state in twenty eleven got rid of redevelopment, uh, and so it left the city without a mechanism to actually finance any of these projects. Or work on any real community development work. So as a result, for the last, you know, from twenty eleven to uh twenty nineteen, when Measure N finally started generating revenue. So for a good eight to nine years, there was really no mechanism for the city to actually invest in community development work. Or economic development work for that matter. Um, and so we're trying to catch up for almost a decade of lost time in terms of building more affordable housing units. And I think it's kind of rich that suddenly, you know, the state of California wonders why we're in an affordable housing crisis. When they ended redevelopment in twenty eleven, which was the number one mechanism for cities and counties to actually finance. Affordable housing projects. I, I, you know, doesn't make sense to me, but here we are. And, and we're trying to uh play the, the, you know, cards that we were dealt, and, and we're trying to respond as quickly as possible.
So we're playing catch-up as a local entity, and I know there's only so much we can do as a city. But again, affordable housing remains a priority of yours. That's preventative. It's also gonna help us downstream, like you said. But what about the middle point, Vice Mayor? Again, the people that are homeless now, that are in line, as you said, to get into additional help? Then your focus on tackling those folks, is that just, again, building more shelter space, building more beds?
Actually, no. It, in my opinion now, the, the city, uh, it takes a lot of effort. It's, it takes a lot of resources at City Hall to build more shelters, right? There's a lot of political pressure because nobody wants it, you know, they, they call them nimby's, not in my backyard, right? We have people in the community who don't wanna live next to a shelter. And so the idea of entertaining a new, a new site uh is kind of a, a political uh battle. Uh, it's also uh very time-intensive in terms of staff time. And, and what the city will have to do to actually build that shelter, and it's very expensive. And we have to be very uh conscious of our budget. And you know, the, the capacity of Measure N uh is uh, is limited, right? And, and we're, we're getting very close to our limit in terms of uh discretionary spending and ongoing, incurring ongoing expenses. And I think that, you know, I, I'm an advocate for, you know, curbing a lot of our ongoing expenses. Because we know, number one, costs are gonna continue to increase. The city faces inflation, uh, just like every household does. Uh, and so we know costs increase, cost of living goes up. Uh, there's all these uh things that uh contribute to the bottom line. We can add uh additional expenses without any additional services. So we gotta be very budget-conscious. So I wouldn't propose that we actually build another shelter. Uh, what I do propose is that we really focus in, again, on that affordable housing piece. Why? Cause the more units of affordable housing we're able to build, the more opportunities there are for people who are in the shelter today. To actually move out of the shelter tomorrow. And what that does is, it frees up a bed at the shelter. So then, that person who's in the, in the queue, right?
Gets the queue moving.
Gets, gets moving. And so what we need to do is think about this as sort of a, a, sort of a pipeline, right? And we need to move the stream, right? We need to prevent and do whatever we can to prevent the flow, prevent the stream from continuing to grow. Of new people falling into homelessness. We need to, we need to curb that as best as we can. And honestly, the city can't do it alone. We, we need partners with the county, the, the state, uh, the federal government. There's a lot of complex issues as to why people are finding themselves on the streets. We need to make sure that we do whatever we can to curb the flow. But as we see people moving downstream, we need to be able to get them into the shelter. Get them into the supports and then move them out of the shelter into permanent housing. So again, we can open up those beds for new folks.
Two more questions about homelessness, because I know we've talked for a while already.
Okay.
Um, is the city perhaps spending too much on homelessness then, Vice Mayor? And I also ask that because your opponent, the sole challenger this time around, are you. He says the city isn't spending its money properly when it comes to tackling homelessness. Because he believes that you need to address it more at the front end of this, which is perhaps the mental illness aspect. Or the, the drug addiction aspect. That's his critique of what you're doing and what City Council is currently doing. So, going off that point, and also just overall, is the city spending too much on homelessness?
City's not spending too much on homelessness. It's the number one complaint. It's the number one issue that our community is facing. It, it, in, in our city, Bakersfield's not alone in this crisis. We see every other major city in the state of California and on the west coast that is, that are facing this issue. I was just at a, at a meeting with uh council presidents and vice mayors from every major city throughout the country. And everyone's experiencing homelessness uh at, at some level. Uh, so, no, the city is not spending too much. I don't even know what too much means. I, you, you'd have to define that term. We have to get a handle on this crisis, and we're gonna continue to do what we can uh to get a handle on this crisis. We've made progress in that, again, we've moved eleven hundred people who would have been on the street, who are now off the street. But it's because of that inflow that we continue to see people uh fall into homelessness. Now, as to the critique, it's easy to say, and I would welcome my opponent to actually come to a Housing and Homelessness Committee meeting. So we can see the work that we're actually doing and see how we're trying to respond. Because I agree, prevention is a piece that we have to address. And I would argue that it is far cheaper to prevent a person from falling into homelessness than, than to allowing them to fall into homelessness. And then they're to try to treat it. It's also less traumatic for the individual and for the family to keep them housed. And that's why we have invested in programs like rental assistance through the Open Door Network. Uh, we've, we've, we've tried to work with, uh, we just passed a, a neighborhood stabilization program. To help with uh home rehabs for individuals so that they're not displaced. Uh, I have been working with the city to try to build a program so that we can work with some of these residential motels. Because we're seeing them, them fall into disrepair and peeing, people being displaced as a result of that. So yes, we have to address the preventative side. But that, but when you're in a crisis and you have, you know, a thousand people plus who are on the street tonight. Tell them that you wanna focus on prevention. They're already experiencing the crisis. They're already on the street. And we have responsibility to get a handle on that today. So, it's far more complicated than a single soundbite and a single critique. And, and, and that is why, again, why I'm running for reelection. Because I know how this gets. I know it's easy. It's far too easy for people to point the finger at somebody else as to why there, this is a problem. But at the end of the day, you can point all your fingers you want. If we're not moving the needle, if we're not solving the problem, if we're not trying to uh work on solutions, uh, nothing will get done. And I know, it's, and it's very frustrating to me to still drive around and walk downtown or walk in different communities. Um, and, and still see a problem with people who are on the streets. But I, I am reminded about the success of our work when I go visit Brundage Lane. And I see people who are thankful for being off the street. Who are getting to, to, to a place where they, they find stability in their lives. And where they're working towards a pathway to improve their lives, either connecting, again, with family or getting a job. Or uh getting the treatment that they need so that they can find a pathway forward. And ultimately, that is the solution. And it's long, and it's cumbersome, and it's complicated. It's not easy. It's not simple. And this is hard work. Uh, and it takes forever frankly. It takes far too long than I'm patient for, but that is the right path. And so we gotta continue to do it.
One more thing about downtown. You and I have had this conversation before about the kind of ongoing cases of arson. And the downtown fires that are started often in vacant buildings.
Yeah.
Um, I know we can't attribute them necessarily directly to the homeless population, but I think it is a common assumption many people have. And it's also, again, a recurring concern and, and, and issue in the downtown area. How do you propose we tackle that specific issue moving forward in your ward?
Several things. Number one is we have firebugs in this community, right? We have people who are housed and unhoused, by the way, uh, it's true. Who, uh, because of their, whatever um, uh, mental state they're in, who love to see things catch on fire. They love to see things go up in flames. And so, we have had major structure fires and arsons uh grow year after year. And uh, and that's not just downtown, by the way. That's all over. We have field fires uh out in the fields, not necessarily downtown. I think downtown gets more attention because of the fact that we have lar- larger buildings that are vacant. And they go up and they make a lot, a lot of uh fire and flame, and I think it gets a lot of attention. That's fine. But we have to be able to address the issue. So first and foremost, it was the vacant uh building ordinance. Vacant building ordinance really requires every uh owner of a vacant building. If they're not planning to lease it, to renovate it, or to sell it, to register their building. So that the city knows who has what building and what it is like. And the city and neighbors, right, adjacent property owners know exactly who is responsible for that building if there is an issue. Because oftentimes, the biggest victim of, of a fire is the adjacent property owner. Look at Impact Skate Shop with the Two Cam Building. Look at Tina Marie's with the building, building that caught fire on Chester Avenue. Uh, they were not responsible for that fire. It, they were the victim. And it was because of a building owner, a property owner, and, and the vacant building adjacent. And so, the vacant structure uh or, ordinance really allows us to identify who the property owner is. And gives us a telephone number that's posted. I also want to take it, take it a step further and requiring that every vacant building have an alarm system. That is able to communicate with the fire department. Because as you know, as I think many people know, when it comes to a fire, every second counts. At the Two Cam Building, the fire department was notified very quickly. And as a result, um, they were able to contain the fire before it engulfed the adjacent properties. There was still some damage to the skate shop, uh, but it could have been a lot, lot worse. Um, at the Great American Building, uh, that building went up so quickly because of, uh, because of the structure. And because of the all-wood framing. I mean, it, it was a pretty sad uh night. I was out there till one thirty in the morning with the property, uh, with adjacent property owners. And, and watching that, watching that fire. But had, um, you know, and, and our fire department, they did a, they did a tremendous job. At trying to contain that fire. They just couldn't catch it. And as I mentioned, every second counts, every second counts. So if we had an alarm system on that building, that would have notified uh the fire department. And didn't require somebody to notice the fire and then call it in. You know, that's a couple of minutes that could have been saved, and we could have saved that structure. So that's, that's another piece. But beyond that, we need more arson investigators i- in the fire department. We need more folks who are investigating these cases, who are able to get to the heart of these fires and find out who these firebugs are. And, and get them uh into, uh, get them, get them locked up. And, and our arson investigators, once they get to work, they've had, you know, an incredible record, a hundred percent conviction rate. Uh, when they're able to identify these arsonists. And so, they're doing a great job. I think they need more capacity, and I'm pushing to help uh add capacity for the fire department.
And Vice Mayor, very quickly, last thing for me. I wanna talk about the election itself. Your first run for city council, you beat the incumbent.
Yeah.
Second run, you were on a post. This is your third run.
Yeah, yeah.
You have a sole challenger. How are you feeling about this opponent of yours? And overall, your third, your second, excuse me, bid for reelection?
No, I feel great. I, I am so um overwhelmed with uh the amount of feedback that I receive from this community. Uh, people have been so warm. I've walked neighborhoods and people come out of their house to say hello. And to just show appreciation for the service. You know, this job can be at times very um frustrating. Because um, I, I want the best for our city. And uh, I, you know, focused so hard on trying to make our, our city a better place and uh it's war two. I was born here, I, I was raised in this community, and I wanna see us transform. It's just, uh, there's a lot to do. There's so many issues that are compounding one another. Um, and as a volunteer, is, I don't think most people know that city council is not a paid position. It's a volunteer position. You know, I've spent pretty much every night and every weekend committed to this job and to this role. And uh, it's, it's been an honor. And I feel strongly and passionately about the city and our downtown and our historic neighborhoods. And what we can do if we just stay the course, that we're very, very close. We've seen a lot of successes uh in various different uh pockets of Ward Two. Um, and, and we still have pressing challenges, but if we stay the course, I know that there's light at the end of the tunnel, and I wanna see it through. I wanna finish the job that I started, and uh, that's why I'm hoping to get reelected.
Your to-do list isn't going anywhere.
It's not. It's only growing.
Well, Vice Mayor, thank you again so much for your time today. Good luck on your campaign, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you.